Pursuant to Section 841411 of Nebraska statutes, notice of this meeting was given on March 14, 2019. The meeting will convene at 6:30 PM and visitors may obtain request-to-be-heard form from any staff for any presentation they have for the meeting. In accordance with policy, the request-to-be-heard forms must be submitted to the Secretary within the first five minutes of the board meeting in order to be heard at this meeting. Agenda items are subject to reordering at the discretion of the Board President. Please attend the entire meeting to assure you're able to hear any discussion. Thank you. Pursuant to Section 8414111 of Nebraska statutes, the next regular meeting of the Board of Education of Douglas County School District 0001 and Board of Educational Service Unit Number 19 will be held on Wednesday, April 3, 2019, at 6:30 PM in the Board Meeting Room of the Teacher Administrative Center, 3215 Cumming Street. The agenda will be kept current and available for inspection in the office of the Secretary of the Board of Education at the Administrative Building during regular working hours. Pursuant to Section 841412 of Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the Board Meeting Room on the North Wall. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible)
Mrs. Cassidy will lead us with the OPS Vision and Mission Statement.
Thank you, President Snow. Okay, the vision first. Every student, every day, prepared for success. And the mission? Omaha Public Schools prepares all students to excel in college, career, and life.
Thank you. Mr. Redd, roll call, please.
Cassidy.
Here.
Gotti.
Present.
Holman. Crackey.
Here.
Perlman. Ryan.
Present.
Smith.
Aye.
Snipe.
Present.
Present.
Snow.
Here.
Ada.
Thank you. Vice President Holman had a prior engagement, and I will entertain a motion to excuse her from tonight's meeting.
So moved.
Second.
This motion on the floor by Ms. Snipe, second by Ms. Ryan. Roll call, please.
Crackey.
Aye.
Perlman. Ryan.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Snipe.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Gotti.
Aye.
Ada.
Motion carries. Moving on to School Spotlight with Mrs. Monique Farmer.
Good evening, Board President Snow, members of the Board, and Superintendent Dr. Logan. It is Youth Art Month throughout the month of March, and the OPS Proud Spotlight tonight is on the 2019 winners of the National Scholastic Art and Writing Awards and the K-12 National Ceramic Exhibition. We have a total of seven winners from Benson High Magnet, Beverage Magnet Middle School, and Central High School. Congratulations to Annabelle Bullock, Ashley Horan, Bay Ray, May Sign, Paul Air Two, Harper Duke, and Benjamin Lang. At this time, I'd like to welcome Angie Fisher, Supervisor of the Art Department, to the podium. She will introduce each student's artwork and award in a PowerPoint presentation.
Greetings, President Mark Snow and members of the Board and Superintendent Dr. Logan. Thank you for your continued support of the arts for the Omaha Public Schools and allowing us to present our National Scholastic Art Awards to you tonight. Regionally, OPS 7th through 12th graders received 56 Gold Keys, 104 Silver Keys, and 141 Honorable Mention Awards, and I hope you have had a chance to view the artworks. The exhibit will be up until the end of the month, March 29. Two regional ceremonies were held on March 2, and hundreds of students with their teachers and families were present. All Gold Keys move on to be judged nationally, and we have seven of the 32 awards in OPS. Overall, Nebraska received 11 Golds and Gold Medals and 20 Silver Medals, and we are pleased to share the seven OPS National Awards with you and the audience tonight. And if the students, when they, if they could, when they hear their name, come up behind me, that would be great. Annabelle Bullock, she's a Benson 12th grader, and this is her sculpture, Geometric, and her teacher is Samantha Golden, and she received a Silver Medal. Ashley Horan is here, she's a 12th grader, and if, oh, come up here. And if Sharon Carr could join her, her teacher. Where's Miss Carr go? This is titled, Duality of Humans: Ceramics and Glass. It's also the American Visions Award and a Golden Medal. Bay Ray, Contemplation, a drawing, and Oster Patterson is the teacher. And that also received a Golden Medal, Contemplation. May Sign is here, also from Benson Senior. Her drawing, Karen Pride, received a Silver National Medal, and Oster is her teacher. Benjamin Lang from Central received two Silver Medals, and Tanya Simmons is his teacher. And Ben, if you remember, he received a National Award last year as well. And we have Harper Duke, 8th grader from Beverage Magnet, from, with her glass piece, Floating, received a Silver Medal. And then we also have Paul Air Two, from Benson, Grade 11, received the Emperor's Entrance Ceramics and Glass piece, and that is in the K-12 National Ceramic Exhibit. And this exhibit is an annual juried ceramic competition for kindergarten through 12th grade students in the United States, designed to showcase the best K-12 ceramic work made in the country. The exhibit takes place in a different city each year in conjunction with the Annual Conference of the National Council on Education for Ceramics Arts. This year, it is in Minneapolis, and his piece is one of 150 chosen from 1,164 entries. So, present you with our awards, winners.
Can we give them a round of applause? Well, thank you all for your wonderful work and making us OPS proud. I have a question for all of you to answer, if you're so inclined to answer it. What inspired you to do the work that you did? Starting with Ashley. Sorry to put you on the spot. She's first, I was.
Do you mean like this piece particularly?
Your piece particularly. What inspired you with this?
Um, this one was actually a self-portrait, believe it or not. Basically, what went with this one was, I wanted to like represent myself in something more than just like an actual realistic sculpture, so I did something more of an abstract, because to me, myself, I'm a Gemini. I have two faces. I'm sweet, and then the other side of me is sarcastic and witty, so I thought it'd be a really good way to represent it.
Awesome, thank you. May?
Uh, this portrait is my niece. Ms. Patterson inspired me because she believed in me. I thought I couldn't do it at first because it's in scratch of color pencils. It's not. Took me a while, but yeah.
That's awesome. Very beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ben, welcome back. The podium's yours.
Hello, hi. So, both of these pieces were, I forget what the, this process is, but it's basically where you create shapes, just blobs essentially, and you make faces out of them, just like as, I'm trying to think of a way to describe it, but like where you, where you, yeah, where you create. Sorry, I'm trying to think of a way to explain this properly, but yeah, it was just me making up faces, and if I thought the faces looked all right, I wouldn't add on to them, and I thought I was satisfied with these faces, so, yeah, and that's turned into these, these pictures, I guess.
Very creative.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much.
So Ben and Ash, now we have Harper.
Harper.
Um, so basically, I had like a bunch of different sketches of what I was going to do, and then I kind of like put them together and like made it into like that piece.
Wow, thank you. Paul Air?
So first, I thought I'm gonna make only one elephant, so like, I start with the elephant and like, I kind of like, kind of want to add more ideas, so I add one more animal, yeah, add the pattern. I don't know, like, I can't wait to, like, I just try, I just want like, I just want, I just want to get a good grade, so yeah.
That's a good motivation, that inspires a lot of people. Well, thank you guys so much. Colleagues, do you guys have any questions? Mrs. Gotti.
Well, congratulations to all of you for winning this award, and I hope that you'll continue to pursue art in some way, whether it's after you get out of high school or just for your own creative juices to flow. But I really want to thank the art teachers in our district. Not every district has art in elementary school and middle school and high school and, I guess in high school, yes, but not at the elementary level. And I think that OPS does a great job of inspiring kids to pursue art because of our opportunities in elementary school, and I'm just very thankful for all of you for the effort you put into helping our students draw out the creativity within them. So thank you so much.
Thank you again. Mr. Perlman.
Thank you. I also want to echo what Ms. Gotti said and recognize the importance of what our art teachers do every day. I love my art teacher in OPS. I remember her, she was kindergarten through 6th grade, Mrs. Wright. For anyone who might have been in the district long enough, she was, she was just a great teacher. I really loved having her, and I use some of the same things with my children that she taught me. And I also want to recognize you, Ms. Fisher, you recently were acknowledged with a national award for National Art Educator Award.
Yeah, that's good.
So Ashley's work and Bay's work are going to go to New York, and they have a chance to go to Carnegie Hall, and there's an exhibit at Parsons New School and Pratt Institute during the summer, so.
Do they get to visit their artwork in New York?
Well, it's all on their dime, but it has happened. We've had some fortunate students and some PTOs and PTA's help and alumni associations, so it's possible.
Thank you guys so much. We would love to shake all your guys' hand and congratulate you, as well as the teachers as well, and take a photo right here in the middle after. Please give them a round of applause.
I did see her, her piece.
Are we running out of those?
No.
There we go. You've been missing the forward president. Push him in a little bit more. Just a little bit more love.
A little bit more.
Little bit more love and smiles. There we go, that's looking good right there.
Okay, one, two, three. Take one more. One, two, three.
Moving on to our agenda, Treasurer's Report. Mrs. Byrd.
President Snow, Superintendent Dr. Logan, members of the Board, the January 31st year-to-date financial statements have been complete and provided for your review. I'd be happy to respond to any questions.
Thank you. Dr. Logan, Superintendent.
Good evening, President Snow and members of the Board and folks who are gathered here today in the boardroom. We first of all want to welcome everyone back from spring break. I was at Jocelyn Elementary School this morning, and the first sign of spring is two bicycles on the bike rack, and so I was really tickled to see that, and looking forward to no more weather. Earlier today, I shared with our staff and families that the Omaha Public Schools Foundation has organized a fund to accept donations to help provide flood response, relief, and support to our surrounding communities. Some of our own staff, exactly 195 of our staff members, live in affected areas, to include Arlington, Ashland, Bellevue, Blair, Cedar Bluffs, Cedar Creek, Council Bluffs, Crescent, Fort Calhoun, Fremont, Gretna, Honey Creek, Hooper, Louisville, Meade, Missouri Valley, Murray, Pacific Junction, Plattsmith, Springfield, South Bend, Valley, Waterloo, and Uten. Tomorrow morning, those staff members will receive an email from our Chief Human Resource Officers to let them know that we continue to stand with them and to provide support for those affected staff members in our district. The 2019-2020 academic calendar is now posted on our website. We know many of our staff and families plan vacations, and we appreciate them planning vacations around when school is in session, and they may now access the calendar at OPS.org. Coming up shortly, we have NSCAS, which is our summative testing. Parents, it's almost time. The Nebraska Department of Education offers resources on their website about the assessment, as well as access to practice materials for students, for those families who are interested in taking advantage of that. Testing will take place now through April 26. Our 3rd through 8th grade students will take, will test in English Language Arts and Mathematics, and 5th graders, 5th through 3rd graders will test, 5th and 3rd graders, 3rd, 5th through 8th graders will test in science. I also need to remind everyone that the ACT will take place on April 2. There is only student that's, school that day for students who are in the, who are in the 11th grade. Congratulations to our OPS, and thank you, Mr. Perlman, for recognizing Ms. Angela Fisher. She's the National Art Education Association 2019 National Supervision Administration Art Educator. This award recognizes excellence in professional accomplishment and service by a dedicated educator. The award will be presented, well, was presented last week in Boston, Massachusetts. Congratulations also to Gage Lukowski of Bryan High School for meddling in business service management, Steven Pura for meddling in human resource management, and Paola Jasso and Diana Chavez for meddling in business law and ethics, and I'm going to assume that that is the DECA competition. It sounds very much like DECA. Also, huge congratulations to Omaha South High School for winning the NSAA Class A State Championship Title at the pinnacle. I hear this applause from two South High grads on this dais, and they were there in person.
You guys, three.
Three, I'm sorry, three, I'm sorry, I forgot. Mrs. Crackey is also a South High grad. Go Packers! And I appreciate you reminding me, I do apologize. So the championship title was won on March 9. Central High School and South High School, it was a great night for OPS, played very well, and we're very excited to invite Omaha South High School basketball players, the men's basketball team, here at our next board meeting. Also, congratulations to OPS students who qualified to participate in the State Geography Bee. This is really, really cool. Aiden Blakely, March 29, is that when that will happen? Aiden is a student at King Science. Anthony from McMillan Magnet, Noah from Wilson Focus, Basie from Beverage Magnet, and Braden from Mars Middle School. We're very excited about all of those students. This concludes my remarks. President Snow, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Logan. Moving on to Board Members. Mrs. Crackey.
Good evening. Because I was given, sent and mailed out things from Catlin School, I attended their string program, and it was very good. 4th and 5th graders now are in strings because the 6th grade is no longer with them. And while we were talking about other districts, et cetera, I was sitting next to a mother there that's opting in from Millard because we had the strings going for the 4th and 5th graders, and she wanted her child to have that opportunity. So that was very pleasant. And then in visiting with the principal, something's going to happen at Catlin that many people who have been there before and know that you, the parking lot does go all the way through now. It used to be one way in and one way out. It's great because it's extended. It's never enough room, however, especially when there's anybody in the building for any other reason. And so something wonderful is going to happen. And I thought that, as I was walking, and I thought, my goodness, can't we get something at this back door? It's been ages. In the past, if somebody saw me and I knocked on the door, they'd come and open it up. Otherwise, you go all the way around and then you get in there. Guess what? They're going to turn the opening into where their parking lot is, and so people will be able to park and go through there to the store. And I thought that was very exciting. I wanted to share that with the audience and all the people who've been to Catlin so many years and know what an inconvenience that was, and I'm very pleased and proud that that's happened. Thank you.
That's on the agenda tonight for I-7, capital improvements, 2018 bond. Thank you, Mrs. Crackey. Mrs. Gotti.
I just want to point out that Burke will have their theater production, Big Fish, which is a Broadway musical, on April 5 through the 7. So if you've ever attended a Burke event, you know how amazing the musicals are there, and so I just would encourage members of the public to get an opportunity, if they have it, to go out and watch the Burke production.
Thank you. Mr. Smith.
This past weekend, the Empowerment Network hosted a Justice and Violence Prevention Summit. There was a great number of OPS students who attended that event. It was held at North High School, in their Viking Center. They've really been working closely with a lot of our OPS kids, and I just wanted to thank the Empowerment Network and Omaha Public Schools for working together and putting together positions for kids to work in the summer program, the Step Up Program this summer, keeping our kids actively engaged during the summer.
I believe it's a record number of Step Up students this year.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. All right, thank you, Board Members, for your comments. Moving on, we have no public comment, so we're moving on to the consent agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda that is before us. There's a motion on the floor by Mr. Smith. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Crackey. Mrs. Cassidy, any abstentions? See none? Roll call, please.
Perlman. Ryan.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Snipe.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Gotti.
Aye.
Crackey.
Aye.
Ada.
Motion carries. Thank you. We're moving ahead on our agenda today. Moving on to item Legislative Update, J1A. So why John makes his way up to the podium. We only have, we're right in the heart of legislative session. The committee met on March 8 and the 15th. The last action the Board took was on the 21st, so what will- So what we'll do is I'll read the bills that we are opposing or supporting and then where's one bill that the legislative committee didn't get a chance to get to? We'll have John explain that bill, but tonight's vote will be on, I'll reread, reread those bills to make sure that, that bill's included, if that makes sense. Alrighty, so, the legislative committee is, recommendation on LB-206, oppose. LB-537, oppose. LB-685, oppose. And Mr. Lindsey is going to make a recommendation for LB-647, which is the virtual school bill. Could you just give us a brief update on it and then your recommendation?
Thank you. 647 is a bill that the board has seen before. Deals with virtual schools. The bill was, or bill's very similar to it, was introduced two years ago at the request of OPS. It was introduced by Senator Wayne. Senator Wayne reintroduced the bill this year because it did not pass during the last biennium. It would further define virtual schools right now. The district gets reimbursement for virtual students. This would change that to allow us to get some partial student reimbursement, which would better reflect the expenses that OPS puts into virtual schools and would better reimburse us for those to better reflect what we're doing. And so we recommend a position in support of the bill.
Does anybody have any questions? Mr. Pearlman.
So what, what would the impact be on private schools? This bill, how would it impact like?
The impact on, it would not have an impact on private schools unless, unless those schools were, I think I'm messing with your chart up here, machine up here, Matt. The, it would not have an impact on, on private schools. It would have an impact on how, how OPS or anybody offering virtual schools, any public school district offering virtual schools, is reimbursed for the students that we have in our virtual programs. It would not send money to private schools or anything like that. It would reimburse the district for what the district provides. Now, the students might be additionally enrolled in a private school or they may be homeschooled, but this would reflect what OPS, what services, what education OPS is providing to those kids.
So it's, it's limited to public schools in Nebraska?
Public school districts, yes.
Mrs. Godding.
So just because this has been ongoing for a few years, the reason that OPS introduced this was we were not getting the funding initially at all for the cost of the students, primarily because we were the first ones to do a virtual school, thanks to Mr. Dixon. So we want to reflect recovery of some of the costs, which include obviously technology and staff as well.
The virtual school here is, differs from many virtual schools, which are completely online. There's a hybrid model here where students are required to come for part of the week and therefore we have staff that staff those schools and then obviously they are available online. In addition, Mrs. Lowenstein and her team, Dr. Lowenstein and her team also provide parent training. They call them parent, education coaches, did I get that right? Education coaches that are, actually they're parents. And they provide training for them on how to help their students at, at home as well. One of the things that the hybrid model helps parents understand is where they should be as opposed to where many students sometimes are with homeschool students. Sometimes there is a big disconnect between what state standards are requiring and what they may be teaching at home. And Mr. Dixon can provide any other information.
There's also a requirement currently to have 51% of time of that student. So a lot of your homeschool parents don't want to commit to OVS because they're committing more time than what they would like to, to commit at that point. So this would allow them a scaffold attempt to, if they want to take one or two courses, we would still get the funding for those courses. So, without that requirement of 51% of that time.
Thank you. Any other comments? Ms. Ryan.
I have a question on a different one if we, if somebody else still has a question on this one.
Go ahead.
No, okay. On LB-206, why are we opposing that one? The student journalist freedom of speech?
Yeah. What about, I'm sorry.
Why are we choosing to oppose it?
Because it would take authority away from principles and not, not allow, not allow oversight of journalism departments or journal publications, student publications at all. It would also possibly create liability on the part of the school district for, for failure to exercise what minor judgment would still be allowed. It would be required to, the school district would be required to watch certain areas, but were prohibited from doing other areas. So there's, there's a lot of uncertainty with respect to the, with respect to what the bill would do.
Mr. Pearlman. Let me. Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Lindsey. I will entertain a motion to approve the following position statements. Oppose LB-206. Oppose LB-537. Oppose LB-685. Support LB-647.
So moved.
Motion on the floor by Mrs. Godding.
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith. Any other discussion? Mr. Pearlman.
Is it possible that we could split up these position statements?
Which one would you want?
Well, a couple of them. I, I don't feel comfortable with the journalism one and the virtual school one.
Will you be willing to amend your motion?
Yes, I'd be happy to amend. Just to get back to the numbers, sorry.
206 and 647.
Removing those two.
Do you agree, Mr. Smith?
I do.
So the motion on the floor is to approve the position statements. Oppose LB-537. Oppose LB-685. Roll call, please. Ryan.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Snipe.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Godding.
Aye.
Crackey.
Aye.
Pearlman. Motion carries. I will entertain a motion to approve the following position statement opposing, oppose LB-206. Really, I think you want them both split.
So moved.
Your second?
Second.
Motion on the floor by Mrs. Godding, second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Smith.
Aye.
Snipe.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Godding.
Aye.
Crackey.
Aye.
Pearlman.
Aye.
Ryan.
No.
Motion carries. I will entertain a motion to approve the following position statement, supporting LB-647.
So moved.
Your second?
Second.
Motion on the floor by Mrs. Godding, second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? Mr. Pearlman.
Yes, can we have a little discussion about whether or not, and if so, what requirements that LB-647 or the underlying bill has that would require virtual schools to be as comprehensive as OPS? Or is, I mean, I know OPS does have what appears to be a comprehensive virtual school system, but is that required under this bill? In other words, the in-person face-to-face time and those sorts of things?
No, that isn't required in this bill. The, the way that districts decide to implement their virtual school is not part of this bill. This is the bill regarding funding.
And see, that's, that's kind of my concern because the, I'm no expert in it, but you know, when you look at things like the Credo Study and some of these other things that show virtual school performance, it isn't good, to say the least. And that's a concern of mine and I know there's corporations out there who like to get in public schools and make money off of implementing these virtual schools, but that doesn't mean every school district's going to do it the way OPS does. And that's a concern when you look at some of the test scores and achievement in some districts that don't do it right. And this, this bill doesn't require it to be done right. And so I just want to make sure that everyone on this board understands what we're signing up for when we sign up to support something like this.
Roll call, please. Snipe.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Godding.
Aye.
Crackey.
Aye.
Pearlman.
Nope.
Ryan.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to item J-2A.
Good evening. Let me start by introducing the team I brought with me. Ally Martinez, who is instrumental in our efforts with the ACT. Janet Zom. And over in the corner, District Assessment Coordinator, Melissa Schroeder. So to get into the ACT data, we're going to talk about two different pieces of data here, if you will, or from two different types of scenarios. And, and while we're incredibly happy to have the ACT as our 11th grade NSCAST assessment, it does cause some confusion with more time-honored ways of our doing the ACT, more over the national ACT. So just very quickly to kind of touch on some of these differences. They differ in sample, process, subtest categories, and the results are from different timeframes in many instances. And so for the national test, for example, all of our high schools, due to the great work of Dr. Nancy Bond, are testing sites. And so those tests are conducted on Saturdays generally facilitated by a counselor and then data is provided to us in the form of a graduate report aligned to our presumptive 12th grade graduates for that year. And so we'll look at the graduate report today, which is for those 17, 18 graduates. The data represented in that report could have been from when they took the ACT as an 11th grader or it might be from a later testing date. What the graduate file contains is the most recent test result for our students. And so it could be their 11th grade score they may have retaken since then. So I wanted to point that out because the 11th grade results we'll discuss are from that testing period that occurred in the 11th grade in 17, 18 during the month of April. So that's one piece that distinguishes. You'll also notice that the kind of subtests are different between the two. So you have the traditional subtests for the national test that includes English, math, reading, science, and a composite score. And in our graduate report, we typically don't get writing. Firstly, we have the state level test, the junior test, which they've aligned the reporting subtest categories to state statute. So we have English Language Arts, Math, and Science. And so that is one important piece of differentiation. Additionally, as I mentioned earlier, those 11th grade results are just from that one timeframe when they took the tests as 11th graders. Okay, so to launch right into the graduate report, as, again, this is from national testing of 2017, 18 graduates. And traditionally, we've seen roughly 60 to 65% of our graduates having an ACT score when they leave. As you see here, 16, 17 graduates the year prior to the one we're talking about now had 65.9% of their students. And so with the introduction of the state tests, which obviously dramatically increased the number of graduates with the state test score, and likely many of those students have gone on to take it again as seniors to get a better score if they were capable of doing so. And so that, that is wonderful news that we've seen that the rate rise to 100% of our graduates having an ACT test score when they left us in 17, 18 with the diploma. That represents a 34%, 35% increase in participation. And for that, we did see a slight decline, going from 65.9% of our graduates, likely college-bound graduates, taking the test. Our composite score dropped 2.2 points to 16.9 from 19.1 the year prior. And as I said, this is the entirety of our graduating class, which is different than the two-thirds we typically see. So we definitely don't want to see a decline, but it is good to have 100% of our students tested. Our highest subject area for this testing session is, was in the area of reading. As you can see here, with 17.3 for a scale score. And our lowest area is English. These two are different to the extent that reading is more about reading comprehension, things of that nature. English is more grammar, rhetorical argument, things of that nature, so more technical. Switching to our state tests, so this is the 11th grade state test, the ACT being used for that purpose. We saw once again in 17, 18 that participation was very strong with 97% of kids taking the ELA, 96 math, 96 science. The reason those are different is you can run in, for example, to some trouble with absenteeism. We have one main testing day, April 2nd this year, for example. Then we have a couple of weeks where we try to catch kids and get the test administered to them while they're in school. And sometimes we're able to get one subtest done and other times all of them. It just depends. So that's why you do see somewhat of a variation there. The 2017, 18 cohort did perform better in science, up four tenths of a point, but did slightly worse in English Language Arts and Math, dropping four tenths and three tenths respectively. ELA was once again the lowest subject area in 17, 18, similar to what we saw in 16, 17. Though I do want to mention that these results are just for one grade level, so they're 11th graders. And much like we say for the science test, therefore we have to be cautious about the results and any trends we kind of pull away from because they are one cohort of students. And given that it's a small sample, it can fluctuate quite a bit from one year to the next. Just aggregated by subgroup, if we look at our racial groups of significant size, we find the pattern of African-American students across all subjects performing the lowest of those largest groups, followed by Hispanic-American students and then Caucasian groups. And that's for both ELA, math, and science. So talking about our preparatory plans for this year as well as into the future, we did have some things that are worth mentioning here. So we had a cross-departmental group comprised of CIS staff, counseling staff, and research staff. We get together to meet with schools frequently, high schools in particular, to develop plans for how to integrate the use, the data that we've been able to glean through pre-ACT and to give opportunities to utilize both the resources aligned with that tool as well as the ACT online prep available to juniors. We do know that preparation for the ACT obviously begins at kindergarten and so we want to start building success early on for our students. But we do also want to try to do what we can to help identify areas that deliberative practice can improve their score in. And so that's the, the work we're undertaking now. We also recognize that rigorous courses are some of our best medicine for improving ACT test scores. So as our students engage in rigorous course offerings and opportunities, we do see that having a positive impact on test scores. So as I mentioned, we did give opportunities for deliberative practice through a couple tools. Sophomores having access to the pre-ACT and ACT Academy resources, which includes Khan Academy resources and resources from Admentum that provide a tailored approach to student studying to really kind of polish up those areas that they struggled with on the pre-ACT. ACT online prep, as I may have mentioned earlier, is available for juniors, which is a guided learning path, very similar, available to those students. They have one year to access that. They have one year to access that tool. So if they do take it again the following year, they still have access to try to improve their scores. We've been throughout this process in constant communication with high school principals and their test site coordinators, who as counselors run the national testing process, our test site coordinators at each high school run the junior testing process. Those test site coordinators are often the academic data reps for that school. And we provided with them, through our collaboration, a list of expectations for how to better roll out the data and to make sure that students are having opportunities for that deliberative practice. This is included in both our 18, 19, and 19, 20 plan. That includes the development of curriculum for lessons that are being provided to students on how to best access those materials, how to best engage and utilize those resources, and to improve their score using them. Additionally, ACT prep time is being offered during content areas and as the finished early activity in all courses. And finally, we've, the recommendation has been followed by those schools that can for focus time during advisement periods as well for those who have an advisement period of significant length to do so. One thing I did want to end with is a big thanks to the many folks who make this possible. Our friends at the Omaha Public Schools Foundation, who have been with us for the three years now that we've been offering the ACT as the 11th grade test. They bought snacks for students every year. So many, many thanks to Tobago and Dunning and the gang over at the Omaha Public Schools Foundation. We also want to reach out and thank our friends at District Operational Services, especially Nutrition Services and Transportation for being very flexible on these days. And finally, to District Communications for their support in getting the word out to our families via many modems that this is coming and what opportunities are available to their students. Now, open it up for questions.
Real quick, before I open it up for the members of the board, what's the average point increase every time you take the test? I think it's like 3 points, is that? Do we, what is that? Is it lower than that? So, you know that, I'm being very, no.
It really depends. It really depends.
It really depends, but there's a chance, usually the juniors, that score will increase. Are we tracking that? Are we planning to track that?
So, a couple of things. You'll see an increase if a lot of things stay constant. So if you show up in the same kind of condition, ready to take the test, and you've likely done some preparatory activities or been exposed to some additional curriculum between the beginning and end. One of the challenges we have is with our ACT graduate report, it isn't necessarily the kid's highest score. It's just the most recent one. And so we don't always have available to us the data about the entirety of their scores. We will get the most recent, and then we get the 11th grade result. And so we've done some comparison of those, but like I said, you don't get the entirety of the suite of test scores a student may have. But we would certainly advocate for those students who don't get a 36 the first time out of the gate, do engage in multiple test-taking. The first time, and part of the benefit of pre-ACT and other type prep activity that expose students to the full-length test, is just getting that stamina to take such a test.
Sorry, is that a class that students take? Or is that something that go to their counselor and they can say, you know what, these are the rigorous courses that you should be taking? Or do they have a debrief with those 11th graders?
Sure.
I don't, I don't know, I'm just. And you are not the person to be able to answer that, I understand.
Thank you.
No worries. I'll open up to the board. Mrs. Gotti.
Just to kind of reflect on the question that Mr. Snow just asked. If you look at Slide 3, where you see the test data, that's for the 18 graduates. That was the, so that was their most recent test, whether it was their junior year or some other point in time. If you look down to page 4, and you look at the 16, 17, right? Because when they were juniors, they would have taken it in the 16, 17 year. Then they graduate in the 18 year. So as juniors on the NSCAS ACT testing, you can look at those test scores, and then look up to page 3, and you kind of, you can't really do it with the ELA because, you know, it's a combination of reading, English, and writing. But you can do it with science and math and kind of say, okay, the majority of those students are the same. There's obviously differences in students who don't graduate and students who drop out, were not in those numbers, students who were added in, et cetera. So there's a pretty big crossover. And Mr. Schmidt, Bonnie and I were talking about that ahead of time because I was trying to get a better understanding of the relationship between those, and so.
The one thing I'll say, so these juniors taking it last year, who took it in 17, 18, we will see them in the graduate report for this year for 18, 19. And similarly, the graduate report students that we're talking about here would have had an opportunity to take it in 16, 17, so.
Right, so if you kind of compare, you can kind, it's not exactly the same, but it's their most recent, right?
Thank you, that was helpful. Mrs. Cracky.
I have a couple of things here. One of them is when they take the ACT, if they score at the top of the rank, do they have to repeat taking that then in the other year again?
So if a student were to take, as a sophomore or junior, the ACT and get a 36, the question being, would they then have to take it as an 11th grader for the state test? And currently, the expectation would be yes, that they would have to take it again as an 11th grader. They can choose not to have those scores reported to colleges, I would say is one option for them. But I know the state is considering how to kind of address when you have a student who's already got a perfect score on file. One of the challenges, though, as an aside, would be the lack of the writing test, which is required for our 11th grade test, but not often engaged in by many students who take it at the national testing.
I'm not done. I have other things. On the English section, this is not new news. This goes back year after year after year after year. So I have a question about, and usually it's because our language books are not complete enough. They do not cover some of the things that students really need before they graduate, they really need it for life. And they've been void for a long time. And I told you, I taught out of three language books because they didn't have enough of the stuff they were going to need in it. And being the way I am on that, I'm going to keep harping on that because I want to know what we're doing in the district, what our books look like, what can we do to supplement that kind of activity? That's just got to be better. Now, I understand new students that are new to the district would not have that kind of a higher score. But for our students who've been with us forever, I think that our books aren't complete enough, and where they go and out in the community, once they leave us, they are not necessarily hearing the things we need and they need to be successful in filling out forms and doing some of the things. But I really want to see some improvement there. I really do, and I'd like to have a further report on what we are doing sometime soon. Thank you.
I will add that to the board officer's agenda, and we will discuss it with Dr. Logan.
Mrs. Gotti.
So Mr. Schmidt, Bonnie and I talked ahead of time, but I'm curious to know if in the graduate report, if there's any way that we can get the highest score that the student tested at versus just the most recent score? Because I think that's a better reflection of how they did on their very best day. And so it would be great if we could, I don't know if there's a way to do that. Schools obviously have that data. It's attached to student reports, so. I also, from the junior day perspective, I obviously have an issue with having to take the test. And I know parents who have called the state and said, hey, my kid did really, really well. There's no point in them taking it again. If there was an opportunity for the state to at least consider that best test, because it was under all of those same parameters that the April 2nd date, for instance, this year is on, or if there's an opportunity, and I don't know how the state feels about, you know, supplementing and saying, hey, you could take the SAT that day? Because do they consider that, okay, too much of a different test? And so I don't know how they would, you know, exactly put that forth in their reporting. But I think that there should be other opportunities because I think, as I was explaining to Mr. Schmidt, Bonnie, well, you may not report it to a school. Many schools require that you report all test scores. And so if you take that test on April 2nd, you just increased your cost as a parent because now you have to submit that test to every college times the number of schools you're applying to. So let's say it's eight schools. You just are paying $15 or $20 additional to send that test in, and it may not be your best one. So I see the challenges with that. And so I guess I would like us to do whatever we can to work with the state on trying to figure out better ways to work with that. I couldn't agree more with Mrs. Cracky, which is what I've been saying for a long time on ELA, related to it starts in elementary school. And when we're not teaching phonics, grammar, punctuation, sentence structure, it's very hard for a student later on to be able to grasp those concepts. So that has to start early, and it's disappointing where we're at today. I think that from the high school information too, I would like to see us work more on making sure students are ready in algebra and geometry because truly, that's what's on the ACT. I mean, that's the vast majority. We usually say, what, you get two or three trig or calculus questions? But outside of that, you really better know your algebra and your geometry. So I think it's really important that we focus on that. I would like to see our high schools do the same thing that other high schools are doing, and I know Dr. Logan and I have talked about this, which is every day in your core subject matter, making sure that every student has a question on English, math, and science. So that by the time they get to April 2nd, they're fully aware of what those questions look like. Many kids won't go online and do the online prep. Khan Academy is really built around College Board and not ACT. So there's not really a Khan Academy specific for ACT. But it's something we could do every single day in every single one of our high schools to prepare our kids to take the test. And I'm not aware that we're doing that. I am aware that other high schools in the area are doing that. I would like to see us pursue that. And I would really encourage every high school principal out there to make an effort to prepare our kids every day to be successful.
Mr. Smith.
Can we access how many students are using some form of OPS ACT test prep, especially our online? So that way we can kind of match data that says the percentage of kids who use the test prep, their score increased by this much? Or so we can at least know what that number looks like? And then how can we also track the attendance rates during those days so we know how many students are actually taking it on that day and are showing up prepared?
Dr. Logan was not in her head. She said, we can do that, they can get that.
Mrs. Cracky.
Talking about the test again, where they're deficient in it and they go off somewhere to take it, they do have to pay money again. So if they hold on to the good scores that they have and just take those others, and then send them back into the district, wherever that is given. Sometimes it's at Westside, sometimes it's been other, it's at Burke sometimes. I know, I've seen that. So I just couldn't agree more that where there's a lull in the score there, and it isn't good, let's focus on that one. And if they have a good score in the others, I don't know why they have to keep doing that one again, especially because of the cost the parents are paying. And sometimes, some of those things don't really come up that much. Not enough to really do what they want it to do, you know? So, I mean, it's a big subject, and I think we need a lot of attention, and we need to talk about this a lot. Thank you.
Mr. Pearlman.
Looking at page 3. Can you tell us what the median score is on the ACT for the district?
I would have to calculate that. It would be slightly higher than the mean. We do have a bit of a negative skew, but it would be pretty close. I'm making up.
Sometime in the near future. I've always been interested. A lot of times we're the average, but we don't hear what the median is, and I'm always interested in hearing that. Thanks.
Well, I have one more thing, if nobody else has anything. So to make sure I have it. I think we answered it. Assuming we answered it. Okay, so Slide 5. So, I mean, this is research. Do we know, have any correlation with why these numbers are drastically different? I mean, if you look at some of these subgroups here, African-American or just Native American students, do we know the reason why? Or are we assuming that, giving an example, when I was in school, we would have to take our test, ACT test for all the students. We had some kids that didn't care, and they just filled it out and left. I mean, do we know any indication why? I mean, you look at Caucasian students and even Hispanic students, they're just drastically higher than some of these other, at least these two other subgroups. I mean, if you have anything or.
Look at a profile. I have some ideas. Let me see what I can put together. I don't have anything offhand.
Just something, and the reason why I'm bringing this up is, as always mentioned, we have a lot of community organizations out there that their job is to focus on students and get them ready for college, whether it's College Possible or anything else. And if those institutions do not know what we're seeing and what they can do to better help prepare students, I think this is an opportunity that we can use with those organizations that really target minority students to prepare them for college. And College Possible isn't the only one, but there are.
All righty. Dr. Logan.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidtman, I appreciate it. The, one of the things that I wanted to mention was I appreciate the comments regarding the need for aligned English Language Arts resources, especially in the K5, because that is where the foundation is for students. We can't really start at 6th grade. We have great resources starting at 6th grade with the adoption of the collections product that really is very rigorous. When I speak to middle school teachers, they talk about how difficult it is, and the kids do as well. And the issue is that the K5 resources have not caught up. And I want to thank Mrs. Comine and her team for beginning the process, for, they've already initiated the process for the adoption of K to 5 materials that are aligned. And that addresses some of what Mrs. Cracky said, and certainly with Ms. Gotti, and I believe Mr. Smith as well, in terms of the things that we need to do. And in terms of the community groups, we do have some opportunities. There was something that you said that triggered about one particular group. And we do, in that particular area, have a lot of resources in how are we using them to really help our students be able to show what they know? Because they're going to be required to do that as they transition to post-secondary. So thank you, I appreciate it very much.
Thank you. All right, moving on to our next item, Student Assignment Plan Committee Update. You ready?
Okay, I have an update on our, really, it was our first really concrete meeting for Student Assignment Plan. We've got a lot of work ahead of us, but we met on March 6th. Board members present were myself, Mrs. Gotti, Ms. Snipe, and Dr. Holman was present by phone. Also present from the staff, OPS staff was Annie McFarland, Casey Hughes, and Mr. Wright. We covered a lot of ground at this meeting. We learned that the staff is working closely with cooperative strategies on several input sessions regarding the boundary process for the new two elementary schools, middle school, and two high schools. This is going to be a big undertaking, but we got quite a bit accomplished. Cooperative Strategies held listening sessions with curriculum instruction and support, school support, to understand school-specific programming. Additionally, Cooperative Strategies has met numerous times with the Research Department. They had a lot of good information to present to us, so it was a full meeting. They have gone over the development of the data and the tools to collect input from several small group sessions and internal working sessions. Cooperative Strategies and the district held multiple small group input sessions to collect this input. And the different participants that were part of these groups included parents, students, community members, and members of school staff. There's going to be three large community meetings that are going to be held in April, and input's going to be needed. So these. So these particular meetings are going to be posted on the website, but I'll give them to you now. First one's going to be Tuesday, April 16th, from 6:00 to 8:00 at South High Magnet. And this will be primarily covering the South Omaha middle and elementary school boundary changes. So this will be quite a bit of the conversation. The next is Monday, April 22nd, from 6:00 to 8:00, and this particular one will be at Burke High School in the gymnasium. This will cover the high school proposed boundary changes. And then the third and final meeting will be Tuesday, April 23rd, 6:00 to 8:00, again at South High Magnet in the gym, and this will cover the South, the high school, the South location, 60th and L. Additionally, the Board of Education, we are scheduling two different workshops to discuss the boundary process, and those are, I'm not sure if these are tentative, but first one is scheduled for April 10th, and the next one is Monday, the 13th. Both are at 6:30.
They're all hard dates.
Hard dates, okay. They're final. Let's see. The goal is going to be to provide final boundary recommendations to present to the full board. That concludes my report for Student Assignment Plan at this time.
And Mrs. Cassidy, I'm assuming that when they, was the strat group, were they at the meetings with you guys?
They were not at this time, no.
Okay. I'm assuming they'll be in the future to the Student Assignment Plan Committee. Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? Alrighty. Well, that's it. Receiving reports, there's third quarter travel expenses and CBOC Phase 1, Phase 2 update for February 2019. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the superintendent, secretary to the board, and legal counsel. Negotiations, pending litigation, and legal advice.
There's a motion on the floor to go into closed session by Mrs. Cassidy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Ryan. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Snow?
Aye.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Scotty?
Aye.
Crackey?
Aye.
Coleman?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Snipe?
Aye.
Ada?
Motion carries. Let me remind the board that the purpose for closed session is for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the superintendent, secretary to the board, and legal counsel. Negotiations, pending litigation, and legal advice. Let the record reflect that the board went into closed session at 7:39. That means closed session starts at 7:44. Thank you.
Sorry, Mrs. Murphy. Let me know when you want to grab cigars sometime. Are there five people out here?
Do you notice I just go like this?
Two, four, six, seven. Who's still in?
Not yet.
God sir.
Okay, now you're good.
Let the meeting reflect. The board came out of closed session at 8:29. Meeting's adjourned at 8:29.